Welcome to the July 1 Commissioner meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we've approved the minutes from the June 17 meeting. And the accounts, accounts payable vouchers and the payroll. Uh, I'll take a motion to that effect.
Make the motion to approve the accounts payable vouchers, payroll docket, minutes, June 17th is submitted.
I second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Mr. Carter? Sure.
I just gave you a letter, give you a little background. As of, well, you know, in April, I was here for the first time asking for this county to issue a second amendment sanctuary policy. And then I was told that you had to have a public meeting. Of course, we were in lockdown. We never had a public meeting, whether you did or not. That's what I was told with that.
Sure.
Next, it was, you said that you couldn't enforce it uh, because you had to follow federal law and enforce it. And then I brought your documentation. No, then I brought your documentation that the sheriff is the number one law enforcement in this county or anywhere in the country, going back to before this was even a country. The sheriff is the number one official. Now, that's because he's elected and he works for the people. We don't like it. We give him. We can't do that with police chiefs or anybody else. But then we'd bring you up to date. As of June 28th, sorry, I didn't have time to get this. Don't mind the accent.
Huh? Oh, sure, you can sit, you're fine.
As of June 28th, there were 61% of the counties in the United States that have second amendment sanctuary laws or resolutions. Oh, that's 61%. 58% wrote their own laws. That's why there's a little bit difference, which we need to never want to, which I gave you samples of. Which is recently, the governor of Missouri signed a law stating that any public official in any capacity in the state, and I think he has a fine up to $50,000 if they assist the federal government in enforcing federal firearms laws. The Department of Justice, which I cannot find the text of, sent a letter to the governor. They released it to the news networks. They're little puppets and they always hold kind the DOJ is cracking down on the governor. He was to write them, tell them the clarification of his law. And today I have just given you a seven page letter that he wrote back to them. And I think he made a pretty point. They best not come and expect anybody in the state of Missouri to assist in any federal law enforcement on firearms. Yes, and that, and he's got it all covered. We should not be spending taxpayer money in this county enforcing federal laws. They want their federal laws, but then federal money. Our taxes are high enough, we send them. They ought to be able to handle their own personnel. But when they come in again, like they said, they like to come in. They want to use our SWAT teams. They want our people in the risk there and trying to enforce these and so forth. It's got to stop. And I think the governor's letter pretty well says that all. So I'm asking the commissioners again that you pass a law guaranteeing that Jefferson County, Indiana will be a sanctuary second amendment county and that nobody in this county will assist the feds in enforcing unconstitutional firearm laws. I don't see what the holdup can be now. The letter from the governor pretty well told him what he thinks the Department of Justice tell them what he has to do and can't do. He quotes the second, the 10th amendment. Everybody's aware of the 10th amendment. And I get a little upset because almost everyone, everybody has forgot the ninth amendment. And that's an important one. If it's not specified, there is no law that you can make that we have to do so. That's a right we keep. And so therefore, I'm requesting that you pass this ordinance. And I'd like to see that have teachers like, there's a heavy fine for anybody that breaks this law. And some are putting in jail time for anybody that does it and so forth. There's a lot of examples out there. And I can get you a copy of the Missouri law too. But what I brought today was the governor's answer to the Department of Justice on trying to tell them that they have to enforce federal laws. They do not have to enforce federal law. The Supreme Court ruled on that on several cases. And I don't know why we're spending my money that you get to help the feds when they're getting a big chunk of my money to do their own darn job. And without, and then of course, the only other thing that's going to come to us in there tonight. Uh, everybody's talking about COVID again. A Joe says, well, maybe we better start wearing masks again because maybe vaccines don't work with the, the so forth and so.
The Delta variant is what they're calling it.
Well, I got news for you. Today it did a stat, you're aware of my stats I've done on it. We are still at 98.8 recovery for COVID. As of this, worldwide, it's 97.8 worldwide. So this is, and this is a year, by the way, that our government told us it was going to be the worst flu season in several years. Gee, I didn't see any clue this year. I wonder if maybe the COVID wasn't part of almost all of the serious flu season that was supposed to happen. Now your CDC has come up with a fact. They're not going to report the side effects like the people, the teenagers that are paralyzed and so forth from reactions to them. These vaccines, by the way, are not tested. They're not approved. And there's no reason, and they've decided now they're not going to report adverse, like people being paralyzed, the youngsters. They're only going to count the deaths. And as of last week, it was 4,000 and more deaths. And I don't believe I can believe that either. Anyway, that's just an update on COVID because they're going to tell you to start wearing masks. And the other thing is, they cannot prove, going back to 1988, that surgical mask will prevent you from SARS-2, of which COVID is just 19, it's only a variation. There's been no clinical trials to prove any mask. And with that, thank you very, very much.
Thanks. Thanks for coming. Any questions? I mean, we're, we're, we're looking at things, okay? We're not, we're not just ignoring your time, David.
Well, I'm persistent and I'll be back.
Well, I gathered that, that's okay.
I will be back. I'm persistent. Because this is, I really believe in it that the federal government's overreach, as the governor of Missouri stated, is getting totally out of control. Because once you register your guns, they'll be on your doorstep to take. It's happened in every country in history.
I don't believe this, sir. Where are we spending money for federal money?
Oh, we're not spending any federal money. That's what I'm saying. We're spending your money and my money for federal law.
I'm sorry, I'm not, they haven't been knocking on my door for my gun.
Huh?
I'm sorry.
They're going to what?
This nonsensical thing here.
I'm going to say we should not be enforcing federal laws with my tax dollars for Jefferson County.
Is it a big problem here in Jefferson County right now?
It will be. I don't know how much is spent. There's no record keeping of when they assist the feds, which is another problem. I think anybody supporting the feds on any of their laws should be documented as an expense too. And maybe we ought to be charging them for reimbursement. I don't know. But I can't find any records of any bookkeeping on how much money has been spent. But I'm saying we better get to the point where we're saying we're not going to do it.
I guess I'm just saying I'm against ordinance to make us a sanctuary county, just here. I said, I'm, I'm not in favor of them enacting a law to make us a sanctuary. We're, I mean, I don't think our guns are in danger of being taken. Assault weapons may be, but I'm okay with that.
Oh, Mr. Biden's already said he's going to take your guns.
That's good, in my opinion. There's not a deer out there that really needs to be attacked with assault weapon.
You want your tax dollars in enforcing federal laws?
I'm okay with this.
Yes.
I'm not.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's our opinion and you're entitled to yours.
That's fine.
I want my tax dollars building federal highways and protecting the people in this country from people who carry assault weapons on the streets and murder students.
Number one, define assault weapon.
I'm not a gun person.
I know, and that is very obvious when you said that because there's no such thing as an assault weapon. That is a term put out by the gun control people. Do you know that the AR-15 is the most popular hunting gun and rifle in this country? And they call it an assault weapon.
It doesn't give an animal a chance.
Well.
I'm not, I mean, I hate to jump in here, but I'm not sure a 12 gauge shotgun does, does, gives them a chance either.
You have to reload and you can't.
Well, most shotguns are no longer a single shot shotguns, okay?
No, they're all semi.
I mean, they have, they, all you have to, I mean, you have to do the same thing, so.
Sorry, I didn't mean to get distracted.
I'm afraid I don't want to have anything to do with it at all.
Well, you know, excuse me, that's, that's your, your option, all right? He's come here to voice his opinion, all right? You may not like it, but, and, and you can voice yours too. But if you want to voice your opinion, voice it to us. You don't need to attack other people who are voicing their opinion, okay?
Well, he invited me to come to his place and I felt that I should refuse him.
Well, you can. And I just wanted to make it available to find out.
Well, once again, I mean, let's, let's, you know.
And that goes for anybody.
The only way we're going to get anywhere through any of these issues is have some civil discourse. And if we're going to start attacking people at meetings, well, I tell you what, that civil discourse is not going to go anywhere. So.
What's the proceeding? If you did pass something like this, what's the proceedings and how to do it? Will the public be notified?
Oh, yeah. I mean, with any, with any ordinance.
You can't just, you come to the end and you have something. You gotta, you gotta go before the public.
The people's got to have some input in it, yeah. We're not, we're not here.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So right before COVID, we actually presented for the county to become to a, there, we came in with, I think almost 2,000 or 3,000 signatures.
Sure, petition.
And this isn't a new thing. This isn't, Jefferson County's not going to be the first. We're honestly one of the last ones in the state. And we're not trying to walk around with AR-15s. Like, honest to God, you walk by me every day and I'm carrying a weapon. I don't hurt you and it's not to hurt you. It's to defend me and more importantly, it's to defend other people. We're not trying to encroach on your safety. We're trying to improve on your safety. And with everything that's been going on in the country in the last 18 months specifically, everyone's going more and more after, or going after the personal firearms, whether it's an AR-15, a revolver, a shotgun. There's even been talks muzzleloaders. And I don't know any hunters in Jefferson County that don't have a muzzleloader. But it's, it's, and we're not trying to push our agenda onto you. It's a free country and that's what we're trying to ensure. We're trying to make sure that our second amendment, which is also your second amendment, is not encroached upon. It's pretty much, it's the same as if someone went to encroach on your first amendment and saying, let's just go use Facebook because that seems to be the number one top, or way people communicate these days. Instead of posting, you know, family pictures and everything else, you're only allowed to post meetings. But you're, you're also not allowed to comment on it. Why would they do that? Because that would be taken away from your first amendment. And that's the beauty of Facebook. It allows you to speak your political views, show your family, keep in touch with loved ones. I've used it all across the world to be able to talk to people here. We're not trying to make anything more dangerous. We're actually trying to make it safer. But there is a long process that we've already started with the county commissioners. And because of COVID, everything got put on halt because they didn't want this to get passed or get denied without the community being involved.
So I think we need to the point where we can now, when we can start to.
I honestly didn't even know you back to having open meetings. So I found out and I came down.
Thank you.
My question is, does the majority rule?
Does the majority rule?
I mean, you deal with the public and the majority may not think that way. But how does that go down?
Well, I mean, one, you give the public an opportunity to make comments. And, and you can listen to those comments and you can, you know, and you're, we're going to weigh things like that. I mean, will the majority of the county come out and provide input? I, I mean, we tried it with the comprehensive plan and God didn't get it. So, I mean, the only, the time you'll see those most upset by whatever decision were, if one were to be made, would be when it is made, right? And then you have an opportunity to vote us out. If you decide that you didn't like what we did, you can vote someone else in. That's, that's pretty much the way something like that would happen. Because during the, the public input time, you'd get some from both sides. And, and, you know, then you'd have to decide, you know, how many? Have to weigh it out. You know, I, I mean, I'm sorry people feel that they, that in, having a second amendment sanctuary city means you'll have people going up and down the street with AR-15s. I'm just not sure you see that anywhere, but that's been kind of the thing that gets thrown out, you know? Most. Huh? So you've seen it? Tell me where.
No, I know. I'm saying that's not, when I'm against, I think that we already have laws protecting the second amendment and that this ordinance is, is needless because we just need to enforce laws. I don't think people are going to be running up down the street with AR-15s. That is a whole other discussion. It's like.
Sure. And I, I mean, I think the, the concern is that there's movement afoot to enact laws that would. I don't know.
The way I thought this ordinance was originally written, it almost prevented anybody from enforcing any laws in neighborhoods.
Sure, that, that initial one.
If we don't want gunshots in our neighborhood, you couldn't enforce it.
Sure, I mean, it, it. That initial ordinance had some pretty wide ranging and we, and we wouldn't pass that, I can say that.
That's the irony, actually, that's.
So, I mean, would we consider something along the lines of, of talking about the second amendment in Jefferson County? Yeah, we might. Would it be an ordinance? Probably not, but it would be something that we'd come up with. But that's what we want to sit down and talk to them, the folks that brought the, the initial ordinance. We just didn't want to out of hand say and dismiss it, so.
Well, I'm not ready to leave, so I'll leave. But I will remind you that the law does not give you the right to own the gun. That's your God given right. God gave you the right, not any law. You have the right to defend yourself and your family. That's why this country was started. And I will remind the commissioner, you took it off the office, uphold the Constitution of the state of Indiana and the Constitution of the state of the United States. And that.
I mean, and I take that very seriously. I took it strong enough that I went into the army for seven years, okay? So.
Me too.
You know, I mean, we, we, when we take it.
Thank you very much, friend of mine. Appreciate it.
We were going to be willing to lay our lives down and should have called on that, so.
As I say, any of you that would like to become familiar with guns, we could set up, in fact, I'll get you a qualified person to explain it to you. He's the next, the Department of Natural Resources. I know I can convince him to do it on his stall to tell you anything you'd like to know about guns and the type of guns and the type, and I'll tell you none of that. I have been pushing for the ladies, the women of this country to arm themselves. You have seen what's going on in Minneapolis. It's coming to your suburbs soon. And you will be responsible for your own. And by the way, on the last night, I went out here. Do you realize that on a 911 call, the government has absolutely no obligation to respond? That's federal, Supreme Court ruling. And I can bring that into, if it a bit like that. But we have a good 911 system. That, that ought to be different from, it's on the department, but it still isn't. Apparently it's not going to be, but. Anyway, thank you all very much. We'd like to keep the invitation open. And young lady, you look like you need to learn how to, what one is. Thank you. Have a good time, people. Thank you.
I'd just like to reiterate to Sandy, the reason you don't see anybody carrying an AR? Because most responsible gun owners, you'll never know they've got one on. We don't need to.
I will say I don't have one right now.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm saying.
You have one at present.
I know, I'm as pro-gun as anybody probably in this room or in the county. And I'm not going to carry mine. I don't need, you know, I don't need to.
And I'm not anti-gun. But I am pro-law, I guess. I'm not anti-gun. And I think a lot of pro-law, I mean, pro-gun people are, are pro-law too.
We need to enforce the laws we have on the books now. Adding more laws is not going to, and that, that's just like, okay. DWI hits people head on, kills them. You don't outlaw the cars, do you? I mean, it's just a slippery slope, but.
But we do our speeding laws. I mean, we still have laws to enforce them.
Right. In Indiana, at this point in time, we're still allowed to have our weapons as part of the Constitution, so. I'm, I'm worried about it. I am. Anybody that didn't is foolish, but that's, that's all I can say.
Excuse me. I came down here specifically for this.
Sure.
And I'd like to find out exactly what you're talking about because I know the state constitution says that there is preemptive, so that you cannot pass a law that's contrary to the state. At this point, everything these guys talking about, the state already has, except we do have to have, you know, a permit, concealed and open carry permit, which I pretty much agree with. I don't think I should have to, you know, worry about the person carrying that gun. Isn't going to be using it anytime soon. And they're going to be doing it lawfully and they're not going to be coming out. So what I'm asking is, what is the objective of this thing that you're doing? Is it going to be just instructive? Is it going to be in support? Or are you actually talking about making a law?
Well, I mean, in our discussions with the attorney, we can't make a law.
Good.
I mean, we, we.
Well, I mean, I mean, I'm glad you realized that. Because that's counterproductive. I mean, there's a lot of other things that you could be doing rather than making something that's just going to be, you know, like flag waving or, you know, sandbagging.
You know, do we support? I mean, we've, once again, we, we've taken an oath of office that says we will support the, the Constitution.
Yes.
So, I mean, once again, we don't just say it and then forget it because it isn't, when you take an oath, it, it should mean something.
Well, I, I took the same oath myself when I went to the Navy. And as far as I know, there wasn't really any expiration day on that one.
Well, mine, mine in the army too, they didn't say.
As far as I'm concerned, I'm still under oath, you know, for that, you know, holding the Constitution. So I just wanted to find out what the county was actually trying to do here. So essentially what you're doing is just more of an instructive or a support or something along those lines.
But, you know, I mean, we haven't done anything yet. Mr. Carter's been coming since he's, like you said, since April, trying to encourage us along lines to do things. And, and that's fine, you know, that's his, that's his, that's his right.
Well, I agree, I agree.
So, I mean, and we're, you know, like I said, we, we had a group approach us early in 2020. But then when things, we're getting having a public meeting. We, we've got some things we'd like to talk about rather than just out of hand saying this is the way it's going to be. So, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not an ordinance and which is what they were asking, but.
Right, right. I know, I knew that was the original premise, but I thought that that kind of gone along the wayside. I was, I was surprised to hear it.
There, there was, there were some, how do you say it? Exactly underlying motivations behind the ordinance that I'm not sure everyone was aware of when it was put together, so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Anybody else?
I have apologized for being rude. It's, and I do know about guns. I just don't know to the extent that he knows about guns. My brothers have gun cases filled with guns. They keep locks on them. But they also cannot believe that there shouldn't be background checks and, and permits. There have been too many people and too many lives lost because anybody can get a gun and do anything.
Well, you know, that's what they, that's what they'd lead you to believe, but that's not true. Not anybody can get a firearm, okay?
Well, who stopped the, who stopped the boy that went into the school in Florida and killed all the children? Who stopped the man that set up a hotel in Las Vegas?
So, so there are, there are times when that's happened, but, but it's not, you know, I mean, where were the, you know, I reply, where were the kid's parents? You know? Why didn't they stop him?
Because he, he was in a very unfortunate home situation. I'm not sure there were parents around.
So we're going to give them a free pass, but he's not, so.
Not at all. That's not, that's not what I'm saying at all. The, the original ordinance said that, that anyone could, that it could not be, no background checks. And what it led to, and not just the no background checks, was that if someone took out a protective order against a husband, an ex-husband or whatever, he could still carry his gun and he could not be stopped from carrying his gun. And it, it went on and on. I mean, I read, I, I sent you all an email because I was so upset about the original ordinance and I thank you so much for not just going.
Just because someone has presented us with something, you know, I mean, that's why we wanted to have the meeting to sit down and talk with them, you know? I mean, just because it was presented, it didn't mean that we were just going to follow in line and, and do all that, so.
I'm, I'm very appreciative of the fact that you have handled it that way.
The, the proposal was, what we were trying to do is go about with the commissioners. And, you know, we knew, we had a rough draft pretty much that was a lot of copying and pasting from another county. And we knew that wasn't 100%. We knew that there was going to have to be lawyers involved for the county before we could even go try to pass anything. So that proposal wasn't a proposal. We're trying to get it on the docket. And then after, when it goes up for a vote, it would be written out at that time, if I understood everything correctly.
Very important ordinance, yeah. We'd go to the public and they'd have input on it and, and things like that.
So we just, we let, laid down guidelines. There's a lot that you're saying that's true. Like, I mean, there, but there is a lengthy and detailed process with purchasing firearms and as well with licensing. And like Mr. Little said. and detailed process with purchasing firearms, and as well with licensing, and like Mr. Little said, most, like, a large percent of firearm owners are very secure...
They do abide by the laws, you know?
Yeah, abide by the laws.
So...
But, but it's...
Well, I know, but, you know, are more laws gonna stop people who already break laws? That would be...
God, I thought we were on the same... Where's that guy with a gun? Well, you know, in, in the original ordinance, which as you may say was a rough draft, they wanted our local policeman fined, or, you know, our local law enforcement...
Sure, sure, once again, I mean, that, that was a proposal to us. We didn't come up with that, they presented it to us, and we were just...
But that is what this group originally was proposing, and I somehow am on, you know, I'll be betrayed by this, but I, I did their posts on my Facebook account. And, you know, there's some pretty brutal things out there that they're saying. They don't make me feel safe about them, around them. So, I know you're, you're offering a very conciliatory statement, but that's not the way they come across on this one.
I'm friends with most of them, and I'd like to see what you refer to.
Okay.
You guys were very, very respectful when you, I mean, you were, you were a well-organized group, I mean... We're not gonna try, you're not gonna get anything, you know, pushed through.
You get more with honey than you do with vinegar.
Right, right.
Alright, thanks. Kelly?
You have the call.
Tough act to follow, right?
Okay, well, maybe this will be good, because it's like a breath of fresh air here. Okay, did you, were you, you all able to access these things on the drive? Or do you want me to tap stuff out, like, yeah, I have the, our letter, and then, did you, anybody get this? I don't have any more there, just pass over. Okay, well, I am Kelly Bridges. I am with the Children's Advocacy Center of Southeastern Indiana, and we have a, an office right here up here in the clearinghouse. And I guess, are you all familiar with what we do? And don't need to rehash that, okay? So, we've been serving children out here in Madison. We, we are a regional facility, so we serve kind of 10 counties in Southeastern Indiana. But Jefferson County is one of the fortunate ones that has an office right here in their county. You're also our largest county that we serve in terms of caseload. A lot of times, people are a little bit taken aback by that, or they think that's not a good thing, that, you know, we're seeing the highest number of, you know, child abuse rates or whatever that we're seeing at our center for this county. But we kind of look at it a little differently, and we think it's due to the, the fact that you guys have a really good team in place of law enforcement and Department of Child Services, who are actually bringing the kids to the center when needed. It doesn't necessarily mean that there's more child abuse here than in others, other, other counties. It's just the fact that your team is working really well and utilizing the center. So that's a good thing. So in terms of numbers, last year for the total year, we saw 122 kids from Jefferson County. This year, we're just now through June, and we've already seen 106. So we will most likely double our numbers of what we saw last year for Jefferson County. So our budget request, we're requesting 15,000, and some of the big kind of items that we're hoping to put in place here in Jefferson County for this upcoming year is, this has always functioned as a satellite office, so we staff it kind of as needed. So we're down here, you know, one, two days a week. We wanna turn that into a full-time staffed center, so that we're there five days a week. We, we're seeing the volume that we feel like that's really necessary. So that is one thing that we kind of are hoping to do in 2022 and the end of 2021. And then the second thing is, we implemented access to medical treatment two years ago through Cincinnati Children's Hospital. We have a, a collaboration with them where kids can be seen at Cincinnati Children's. Initially, we were doing that as in-person visits, but something kind of good came out of COVID. We started virtual visits with Cincinnati Children's, and that has worked out very well. So kids get kind of instant access, kids and families. The day they come to the center for an interview, we're able to connect them immediately with a medical professional if needed at Cincinnati Children's, who specializes in that kind of trauma. And they can kind of talk it through and decide what the next steps are right then, of whether or not they need to be seen or those kinds of things. So that's been, really beneficial. So the next step in that process, our next big project of what we wanna do is, we also wanna collaborate that, collaborate with them on some mental health, some mental health services. So they have a program called Bridge that allows six virtual visits for families. And so we're hoping to collaborate with them and be able to provide or allow each family or child access to six visits with Cincinnati Children's mental health professionals, who specialize in the, I have to look at my favor, trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy, which is what is necessary for kids who have faced that kind of trauma. So those are kind of our two big projects that we're hoping to implement next year. So that's it, any questions?
So you talk about Bridge and your...
No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't specifically say the Bridge and full-time staff, but yeah, those are the two kind of projects that we're focused on for 2022.
Would the children have to go to the hospital, or would the...
For the mental health or the medical?
The mental health, or would they come here?
No, they can do it from home. So, so it'll start, it'll start like, you could start there at our center as a virtual visit, and then the virtual visits could continue, just like they did their, you know, Zoom school and all of that stuff. They could access it that way. They'd probably, they'd be given access to a portal and, and be able to access their, their therapist that way. Okay, that was easy. Thank you.
Hey?
Hi. Do you mind if I sit down?
Oh, no.
I, I have a bit of vertigo, and I'm afraid my, I'm trying desperately to keep my head from spinning.
We would prefer that you sit down then.
Thank you, thank you, if I just keel over and then just push me out into the hallway. So, thanks for your time and years of supporting Girls Inc. and our after-school programs. I put together just a, this is, I'm not gonna go through all of this, but I just thought you might find some of this information interesting. I just wanted to talk just a little bit about maybe the impact. So the impact on after-school programming was pretty significant this last year. And where that's gonna go, I don't know. You know, the world has kind of reset itself, parents' needs have changed. So, so we're in a bit of a rebuilding process, I think, because people have just, their lives have just changed, and so we'll see how that goes. But, but one thing that COVID, I guess, allowed us to do is to really focus on outreach. So we spent a great deal of time working on connecting with girls who won't be coming to our center. So girls who would not come downtown to our center, but still can benefit from the programs of Girls Inc. So we focused on our Girls Steer Ahead camps, which we were not able to have at the school. Well, we had one of them at the school, and then COVID hit, and, and we didn't want to have it canceled, because we'd have something scheduled, and then there would be an outbreak, and then we'd have to cancel it. So we ended up just transporting the girls down to the Girls Inc. Center, and this was for 5th grade and older girls from Madison Junior High. So they were able to come down for a two-week STEM camp at Girls Inc., which was a lot of fun. And we've been doing those for a few years, and we hope to continue those this next year. And then, right before COVID hit, we have a program that's outlined in there called Playground Project. And we go in, staff goes into 3rd and 4th grade classes during playground time. It's right after lunch, and doing some programs that the school specifically were interested in. And so we were able to do that. It is our hope that that program will again begin when we're able to, without any kind of COVID restrictions. You know, at the end of the year, we just weren't able to do it yet. So we'll see what this school year brings. And then, Girls Inc. To Go was the, the big thing that we focused on during COVID, and we identified three schools, so Rikers Ridge, Anderson, and Deputy Schools. And their counselors or teachers helped us identify girls that would benefit from these programs. And they, again, focused around STEM. But they would get a bag every week that had a lot of STEM activities that featured a woman in STEM, a lot of times a local woman, so that they, they knew that, you know, there were women that they might, you know, that grew up, the way they grew up, that were doing some amazing things in the world of STEM. And they had a snack, and so they, they got to take that home over the weekend, they returned it back on Monday, and they got another one. And we did that for six to eight weeks. And that program tripled this last school year. So we're gonna continue on with that. We had a grant to do that program. But it allowed us to reach girls that wouldn't necessarily be able to take advantage of regular after-school programming, but who could certainly benefit from it. And so those were some of the things. We, we've got a lot of things we wanna focus on with outreach, but I thought you might be particularly interested with that, because it sort of broadened our scope of who we're able to, to impact. And then there is one thing, if you're a data person, I don't know if you are or not, but we do participate, the Girls Inc. does a strong, it's called a Strong, Smart, and Bold Survey. And Girls Inc. across the country survey their girls about their Girls Inc. experience. We do that at our own affiliate. And we actually then get those responses back, they're anonymous, but we get those responses back, which is wonderful, because then we can, we can use those responses to tweak our programming, so that the girls are really benefiting and, and from the programs that we have. But I thought you might find that interesting. We were never able to do that, we're a smaller affiliate in the whole scheme of things. So we never got our data back, but this time we actually do. And so it's been, it's been really helpful to be able to plan our programming for the future. And then also, there's a narrative budget in here, just, just more of a narrative or a description about how our money is spent, so that you can see that the largest portion of our dollars are spent on programming and the things that fuel that. And I put another copy of our budget request, but ours, ours is the same, $5,000 to support the part-time staff that we have to have to be able to keep our center going and run programming. And then there are a couple of sheets in here just about Girls Inc. that I thought you might find very interesting. But I think, you know, the work of empowering girls and helping them be productive is more important than ever. I think COVID shined the light on good things and bad things about the world. And, you know, we saw a lot of children doing a lot of things virtually that they really shouldn't have, have had to do. And dealing with difficult situations, as she mentioned, doing virtual counseling. You know, it's hard to watch a six-year-old on a video conference call and counseling because of things that, because of a dysfunctional family situation. So, so I keep, keep at it, we're keeping at it, you know, because my goal is, I, I want girls to, to grow up and to, to be able to take care of themselves, to be able to be productive, to, to add to their communities, to give away money, you know, and be able to take care of themselves. So, so that really is what Girls Inc. is all about, and we're, we just continue to do that every day.
I know you've done a commendable job.
Oh, thank you, thank you. My personal, I, I, you know, as I end, get on this end, end of my career, I had really hoped that there were issues that I dealt with as a, as a little girl that would be gone. And they're not. It's just the platform has changed. So it's, it's hard to watch. I really thought there were things that girls would not, that would not be encumbered by, that my generation was, but it's still there, it's just, it's just morphed into a different, it looks a little different, but it's still the same. It's still the same, so, so there's a lot of work to be done, but we have a lot of fun doing it.
Thank you for what you do.
Well, thanks so much for your time, appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a couple things. It rained a couple weeks ago. That rain started on the 18th and continued into the 19th, and as you know, we had a little issue up here on North Walnut Street in that area of town. EMA's response started the evening of the 18th, and we began early on with, with assisting police and fire with those rescue operations there. And then early morning on the 19th, we shifted into our damage assessment mode, and we conducted, in total, at the end, it was 72 affected addresses that we actually assessed, and we were able to submit those by about mid-afternoon on, on the 19th or on Saturday afternoon to the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. Our, our operation center was activated sometime early that morning around 6:00 AM and was staffed, and we kept Indianapolis surprised, and they, they were aware of what was going on long before we ever made that submission. So, which is the way it's supposed to work and the way the plan calls for it. So, don't you love when a plan comes together? So IDHS sent their team down on the 23rd to do their validation assessment, and I'm gonna brag a little bit on our folks. They threw nothing out, they validated everything that we submitted and concurred with, with the assessment. The next step in that process was where they were to request assistance from the SBA, from the federal government. And that assessment or validation survey was done just this past Tuesday. So I felt good after that, that survey was over with. We won't have the results of that for probably 10 days from Tuesday.
We get the state.
Right, you know, it was seven to 10 business days, blah, 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 blah. But again, there was nothing obvious that, that the surveyor was, was not pleased with and didn't agree with, so I don't have any reason to believe that some form of, of assistance won't be forthcoming, so... But that's, that's where we are up to this point. And that is all the, the individual assistance side of, of everything. I wanna put a little plug in, as you guys know, EMA's a pretty small department, and we did an incredible amount of work in a very short period of time, and it had nothing to do with me. We've got some volunteers, they're, they're few, but they're mighty, and they were the ones that were responsible for a lot of what I just mentioned. So the, the work that they, that they give of their time to do will enable a lot of the people here in Jefferson County to receive some of the help that they're gonna get. So I just, just wanna, just wanna mention them.
They should do something to recognize them.
I bought them pizza and doughnuts and everything as we were going along. Yeah, but no, I, yeah, I agree, I agree. No, we, we should, and, but, and like I said, this is just the first step. I mean, I wanna recognize them, because their efforts, the, the benefit of their efforts are huge here, so...
Maybe on the 31st, that may be a little long to wait, but...
Yeah, exactly, yeah, sure, sure. They don't ask for anything, I mean, they're, you know, but, but I, I'm appreciative, and I just wanna make sure that everybody else is too. So in the middle of all this, this is still fresh and ongoing, and now we're switching gears, and we're gonna try and do the regatta as well. We're gonna do a little bit different this year than what we have in the past, not because of, not because of the necessity, but because of, I think, the benefit. As you know, we used the first festival of the season, the car show down on the riverfront, as an exercise for the new Public Safety Center and the Operations Center and some of the UAV and the aerial equipment. And it, it worked. We had a few wrinkles, we had a few wrinkles.
With your practice.
Exactly, so, excellent segue, we're gonna, we're gonna activate the EOC starting tomorrow morning from 8:00 AM to midnight. morning from 8:00 AM to midnight, again on Saturday from 8:00 AM to midnight, and again on Sunday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And we're going to use the regatta as not just another larger scale exercise with a lot more opportunity, but we're going to be able to provide, I think, some services to some of the other local emergency responders that we've not had access to in the past. So I don't want to let the cat out of the bag. If it works well, I'll let you know how it went.
You've opened the bag.
I'll keep you guys posted.
Okay.
And then the last thing I've got is in the middle of the flood and the transition to regatta, the Department of Homeland Security came down from a different division who wasn't working on the flood and wanted to do our quarter two readiness assessment review with us. But the good news is, is we were able to do that and we're on track for 100% completion for the end of the year for 2021.
Didn't need to give you scenarios you had.
Exactly. Yeah, we had, we had plenty of material for them. So, but 2021, 2021 looks, looks like we're on track. So any questions for me?
Got another big deal coming up end of this month.
Yes, sir. Again, mark your, keep your calendars marked. Told you last time to mark them. But July 31st, we're going to dedicate the Public Safety Center. And that's going to start about 10 o'clock. And we got a, I don't want to say a full day. We got a good, good hour or so presentation and program. And we're going to let everybody have an open house and take a tour and walk through and touch and feel and answer questions. And yeah, we're, we're proud of it. We hope, we hope everybody comes out to take a look. Anything else for me?
So I've seen emails recently, federal kind of, or state CERT, C-E-R-T communities?
Community Emergency Response Teams. Now, we, we've, we don't have one.
Should we?
We, it would be, again, we've got the, the volunteers that I mentioned that, that were beneficial during this most recent disaster. That would be an excellent role for a team like that. That structure of that team though, calls for a larger number than what, quite honestly, I've been able to recruit.
Yeah, I understand.
But, but yeah, I mean, it would certainly be a benefit. But the, the, the structure of that program actually calls for a outside person to kind of coordinate and, and organize that and then work with emergency management. And I welcome and would love to talk to anybody who is willing to take on that, that huge responsibility.
I just did.
No, absolutely.
I saw the closest one was Scott County and I'm like.
So if, if anybody is listening or watching or reading a newspaper or whatever, would like to talk about that and then the possibilities, I'd be happy to, to take their call or sit down with them at any time.
Okay. I just wondered. I just.
Yeah, no.
Though into too far, but I just saw that and it just happened to pop up a couple of times.
There are a few counties in Indiana that have very successful teams. There are several counties that have teams that aren't very successful just because it's hard to keep folks engaged when there's not a lot of excitement. You know, a couple of weeks ago, it would be very easy to keep people excited and, and wanting to do more and help. But, you know, when you have the dry spots, you know, which I don't mind, but those folks that are there for, for the, you know, trying to help folks. But, but yeah, it's, it's hard to keep those folks engaged, you know, and, and to find activities, you know, for them to, to feel.
Maybe that's, that's an issue. You don't need to find activities.
Right, yeah. We don't want to go out looking for it, that's for sure. We're all, the tackling thing comes up, but we don't want to go looking for it.
It generally finds us.
It does, usually, yes, sir.
So I'll, I'll do some digging and see.
Okay.
Just putting information together.
Sure. And like I said, anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to talk to them.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Troy.
The sheriff's hiding.
Is he, is he hiding out there? Oh, Bobby's out there too. Okay. Bobby? Well, you're, you're the first one in the door.
Should I get in, should I get down?
Well, I just, I didn't say, I just.
I'm going to be very quick. You notice all my notes.
Well, I asked you, I didn't decide whether I was going to stare.
Uh, just a couple, two of them. The, with probably the biggest two, the, the first one is the paving has been completed for the year. They are still working on some stone shoulders. There will be some repairs coming. Will be kind of coordinated a little bit with the bridge project down here on Milton Street as far as getting that paving, the approach on it. And the structure that we were replacing on Swan Road should be opened up Monday or Tuesday. The contractor sounded like they were going to work Monday. I said, I didn't expect it Tuesday. Take everything out, but it looked good. I was out there today. They, they've got it paved and, and it's coming along very well. We've been extremely busy still removing a little bit of debris out of a few of the culverts and fixing some of the washouts from the floods that Troy was addressing. Got RFP that I've turned in to Endot, waiting on it. That'll probably get advertised here next week. Probably go out the sixth and that'll be open for 30 days for our bridge inventory inspection consultant. And I've turned in the other letters of interest, waiting on Endot's approval for our highest ranking firm on that one. And then I'll be able to announce that on the Bridge 107 project. Attended IAX a couple of weeks ago, they had their summer conference. Went up to Carmel for that. The Indiana Association of County Highways Engineers and Supervisors.
Okay, I see why, I see why they have the other one, but I'm not familiar with the.
That was very informative as far as putting together some ideas for the asset management plan. They were still talking about some of the funding that was coming to the counties and seeing how much that was going to be involved and available for infrastructure and what we might be able to do in our communities. A lot of very interesting conversations going on and a lot of hot topics. Dust control has been performed. That, that has been finished up. I think there's six or seven that went ahead and purchased for some of the residential that was done after our county application was taken care of. Yeah, I think we went just a little bit over on that. I think we used about 40,000 gallons instead of our 35s. I think we've got more houses on the gravel roads. It's, everything continues to kind of increase just a little bit.
Seems like as long as it rains once a week, so we're usually better off than if we go several weeks without rain.
If we could just time that rain a little better.
Well, I understand. We don't have that opportunity. Well, that's, that's true. It's a little too much. It wasn't too much for dust control.
But the crews have been staying extremely busy. We've got much culvert put in. We've still got several things that we're hoping to address very soon. Keep it on the roll. Did have, one of my mechanics has given me his two weeks' notice. He's transferring to Scott County. So I do have that position that's going to be open. So we'll be looking for a mechanic here in the near future. I kind of hate to lose him, but it was closer to his house in one month. So it's kind of hard to argue those two points. And like I kind of forwarded some of the emails that I'd received from Endot's and some of our, I, I'll say similar work environments, you know, that there's a very strong competitive wage out there for mine employees. It is a concern going forward. I've got very good staff and they would excel about anywhere when it comes to the truck driving, excavation, any of the types of work that we perform. And I know budget's coming up, so I'm already sharpening my pencil for that. Anything else that I may be able to answer for you guys? That's all I have for this evening.
I know you've got a lot going on, but we, once upon a time, we talked about some roads that needed weight restrictions so we could. Initially, we looked at it as far as when detours were occurring, but we said there might be some roads.
Right, yeah. The, as, as far as the roads, I mean, it would, most of that's going to fall under the small structures and whether or not they're load-bearing. We had kind of mentioned that some of that. There was a.
I'm just thinking, if you have a list, we could start the.
I had started one and then one of the things that was very interesting, well, that, that jar is part of that conversation from the meeting at Carmel up there when I was with IAX. There was, I can't remember if it was Ox Cart or what the name of that company was, but they were putting together where it would be no expense to the county. And that was something I was going to share with you guys to kind of take a look at as far as some of the permitting for some of the overweight trucks. I know Endot's going to be doing some of that. And I'll, I'll forward that. Ron was up there one day and I shared that with him and, and I might be wrong, but I, I can picture that black binder, that black folder sitting on my desk. But I think that's what it was. And I looked that up. And I thought of that could be very beneficial because whenever you start looking at load rating small structures, you're going to add quite an expense. Because I started putting together a list of our small structures, anything 36-inch culvert or larger, up to 20-foot, because all of our bridges are already federally inspected. And yeah, there's a bunch. And talking with most of those consultants, the small structure inspection isn't a whole lot cheaper than the bridge inspection, but I've got a lot more of them. That would be, it'd be quite an undertaking and there is no reimbursement fund for small structures at this time. So that would be something we would be taking upon ourselves. We have been kind of rating those and when we find those, if they look like they're inferior at all, then we certainly do have those load rated. Or if they're far enough gone, we just go ahead and replace them. So once I get them replaced, then we've got our, our blueprints and we've got engineering, we've got design and all that good stuff that has us covered very well. Very good, yep. I'll, I've got that list. I'll have to find it again. And I'll forward to you guys in Milton County.
Yes, some people talking last time about trucks on the roads and I thought I brought it to mind, that discussion we had, that that would at least be a way to implement the big trucks. To be careful, farmers might have to work out something, but.
You can't stop local deliveries.
Yeah.
And that would fall under the local deliveries. And some big farmers own enough ground, enough places that, that they're going to travel. It's going to be a local delivery.
Yep.
Right.
Yep. Very good. Anything else?
Keep up the good work.
It's been a lot of work lately, that's for sure.
I know.
Bobby?
Thank you.
Sheriff?
Good afternoon.
Hello, Mr. Bay.
Anything you want to ask me? I really don't have anything.
That's fine.
I have just under 190 total and 155 or so in the jail itself. We are offering COVID shots if they want them. I think we've only done about 35, 35 to 40. In crowded. Any other questions you may have?
You've driven up on J Bay.
Yes, I have. I was up there yesterday. I've been up there the last two or three days. They're moving dirt.
Yes, they are. It's a start. Long time coming, but it's a start.
Working on this opening, Grace and Sarah, I guess, are working on, on the inauguration thing or whatever.
Groundbreaking, Sarah.
Groundbreaking.
Let's, let's put some grass over the top in this way.
There's a lot of dirt pushed up there right now. There's the shovel, so. Other than that, you know, we're just moving forward, you know, following through with our maintenance program on our vehicles. I did lose in the last month, two deputies. Another one went to Madison. And then one went to IKE. So I'm in the process of filling those two jobs. I just got two, just graduated the academy two weeks ago. And I have two that are currently in the academy. Of the people that applied, I think if you want to call them civilian or non-police, there's three. And then I have four applications for lateral transfers. So we'll see. At least one of those looks pretty good. So that's just a matter of uniforms and that kind of thing. I think that one's been an officer for about eight years. And that's about all we have going on, other than the everyday, you know, things that happen.
Good.
So I'm not here asking for money.
No.
But I'm like, Bobby, you know, the only difference is the budget time's coming up. I've got like four people sharpening their pencils. So I need somebody smarter than Sheriff, figure it's all right.
You're in a tough business.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a tough business, but, you know, I got a lot of tough guys. So. Anything else? And I'm going to read Mr. Carter's paper. He handed me one of these on the way out. And I got his number and I'll call him back after I read it. But, yeah, we all know an ordinance can't supersede the Constitution of the United States. That's not too sensible. And I'm a gun owner, so. Well, that's, yeah.
You got one on the.
Literally.
Really?
Well, almost my entire life I've worn that. So unless you have anything else, I'm done. I'll let you, I'll hold up your time tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, Dave.
You too, sir.
Anyone in the audience?
I have a question, Dave. In tonight's paper, in the legal ads, it's, I'm taking its notice to bidders and it's talking about paving. What is, what is, where's that at, what it's for?
So does it say where?
Because I'm just wondering about my road, but.
Second round of paving?
And if I heard Bobby running, saying something about the paving is done.
I don't know if that's for the community crossings. It doesn't say where these are at.
Bobby's standing.
Is it right there? So the, the legal notice in the paper on bids for?
Yes, there, there's a, a big FDR project using the millings off of Clifty Drive. And that was, yes, that project came about just because of the proximity of the locations.
Okay. She didn't ask, but she was wondering when, when something was going to happen to her road.
Yes, and hers is on the list too. I've got a culvert ordered for, there was one that we found failing down there that we didn't like that we was going to replace before we got started on it.
I don't, I, I kind of think, I don't know who was responsible, but you fixed it right away. You fixed it before the day it was over. But the metal culvert that somebody tore.
Yep.
Ripped it.
Yep. It had been ripped before and had a temporary patch on there that kind of became a little bit longer term that I wasn't aware of kind of before any of that kind of starts. Looking at the outside of the culvert, everything looked good, but when we were inside of it and looking at it, we didn't like it. I said, I'm not going to.
I was going to say, it's that huge round one.
Yep.
And the other thing I want to do is thank you for, because two mornings in the dark, I was headed to work and those trees, those dead trees, they're falling. And I, you know, I had to get to work, so I went ahead and went under it. But I don't know what was supporting the top of it.
Yeah, it's not highly recommended.
Yeah, I know, but, but anyway, two or three times I've had that happen. We call, and it's taken care of right away and I do appreciate that. I'm just scared to death that one's going to fall on a car at some point.
I don't recommend anybody driving.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Well.
I won't even walk under them.
Yeah, I know.
It only takes once.
Yeah, I know. But I appreciate it. And I, I, you know, they were taken care of right away. I do appreciate it.
We try. We try.
So that has nothing to do with my road.
Your road? Let's see now, whose road?
My road. It's got my name on it.
We're going to rename the road.
Yeah, they do it all over town here. They do it all over town. I don't care if you name it after me, but that's my goal.
Okay.
In case you all didn't know that.
Did they have a road named after you?
No.
I know what your goal, I know what your goal is. So August will be one, three, two years? In, in August, it'll be two, since you start.
I've been down here about that road for about five or six years. Yeah, I have.
She's on her fourth career, right?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, but that's. Yeah, but that's.
I've saved it all.
Couple of them didn't, they just were here and gone.
Thank you.
Way to go, way to go. You stayed to bring it up.
But in seriousness, Bobby, the Greenbrier Road, you know, going up the hill, man, it's really getting bad.
Hey, you just get one, Ken.
Yeah.
Well, I'll take mine then. I'll, I'll let them fight for that one. I'll let them fight for that one.
They came for a couple, they came for a couple meetings and they haven't been back, so I mean.
They will.
They would.
They've moved up here from Texas and they built a house, so they're here permanently, so you'll probably get to know them well. And in the future, you, you'll probably get to know them well.
Anybody else?
You have anything?
Our next, I guess we call it a roundtable meeting, I don't know if you want to call it that, but for our treatment process, treatment training, yeah, it's about, I guess it's not, it's not a roundtable, is it Troy? Kind of a training room, but anyway. Yeah, treatment train, it's really taken on some, it's, it's evolving. So, yeah, July 15th at 3:00, Jefferson County Public Safety Center. Troy's got us set up. Any, everybody's welcome to come. Yeah, oh, she was mentioning there a while ago about the mental health and the bridge. That was even used as a, an example in our last meeting, a bridge that's got the middle of it missing, and sometimes that's our, our mental health and leads into drug addiction and things, so this has turned into kind of a big deal in our world. Meth, amphetamines, just has Dave, he's been gone, but that's why our jails are so full. We gotta, if we could just curb that, we wouldn't have to keep building jails. Right now, if I'm not mistaken, the way it's projected, that jail will be full before it's built. That's a shame, that's hard to say.
So then we gotta work on these other things.
No, we gotta work on these other things. Entertain anybody to come out and give us ideas. I've, I've picked Erica's brand with funding and grants, and we've, we've got some ideas, but we need more.
There's a lot of mental health needs in for children, for children. I have a, a great grandson that, that's been doing the zoo in Little Riley from Indianapolis because of the COVID, but there's, he was on, in order to get that help, he was on a two-year waiting list. Because there's just not enough out there, there's just not enough.
You have?
Yep.
Go ahead. So the Regional Development Authority has been meeting weekly on Mondays, but they have a call for projects on the 20th of July, so we're trying to work with, there's some local people doing it kind of independently, and then there's others working together, so we're trying to put together some things. If you have some ideas about potential projects, things, and, and trying to stay, stay aligned with the regional kind of idea behind the RDA, the Regional Development, trying to, you know, not, I mean, it would be nice to have something that affects or impacts more than just Jefferson County. I mean, Jefferson County can be, obviously, we'd like to be part of that, but are there other things out there where we can kind of collaborate with a couple other counties or cities and, and kind of work that in? I mean, there've been some ideas about, our governor's big on trails, is there a way that we can develop a, a trail system in Jefferson County that would tie to Clark County and Scott County, tied to the state's trail system? Just some things that help people get out and, and enjoy things, you know, is there, in our comprehensive plan, there was talk about doing some planned infrastructure development down in the southwestern part of the county, you know, is, is, that would be another one that would involve several counties, hopefully. So those are some, I, just very rough ideas as we're getting started, but there's, there's things around the arts and music and, and things like that, tying that in. So there's, there's a lot of ideas that are kind of brewing out there and just trying to bring them together. But if you have some ideas, reach out to us and let us know so we can start including that. I think right now, the state in this, it's called READY, this kind of effort is just trying, let's put together a plan. And, and so I think some people are getting really caught up in having a specific project. We can have some ideas of, of projects in there. She changed her ringtone. So, I like the other one, though. So trying to, you know, to, to work those things together. So, anyway, I think each, there's 10 regions, and I think there's $500 million out there, so everyone's looking at $50 million and what they can do with that. So, we're putting some thoughts in on it and, and coming up with some ideas. So don't have to have the specifics, just Jack, I don't even think for the 20th, you have to have the specifics, because I don't think anyone can have the specifics of it, yeah, that quick, so.
Design, development.
Put those ideas together and kind of blend them together and, once again, kind of keep the thought of a regional development in mind when we start looking at it. But I think we, we've got some things to offer people in the, this region, so let's look how we can work on that. Have anything?
John?
Yep.
Make a motion, did you make a motion to him?
He did, yes, sir.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye, thanks for coming.